I would like to call to order the November 18th, 2019 Board of Commissioners Regular Meeting. Welcome, everyone. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We are very pleased to have the Reverend Tom Kavanus from First Baptist Church in Kannapolis with us tonight for our invocation. Thank you for being here. May we pray together. Gracious God, in these quiet moments, we pause now to bow our heads and to honor your greatness as we give thanks for the blessings of this day. The Psalmist wrote long ago that the earth is the Lord's and everything in it. We recognize that every blessing, every breath, every gift, and every grace come from you. We ask your blessings upon schools and teachers, police officers and firefighters, judges, commissioners, public servants, and all who keep Cabarrus County strong, safe, and moving forward. We thank you for new residents who bring new energy, new ideas, and vitality. We thank you for longtime residents who offer stability, a sense of history, and who embody the best of customs and traditions. Bless our homes, our county, and our nation. Watch over those who protect and defend us by putting their lives at risk each day. We ask now for your wisdom to be with the men and women in this room who serve the people and greater good of Cabarrus County. May the decisions made here, both tonight and always, be for the benefit and good of our neighbors around us. May we remember the words of Jesus who said, "That anyone who wants to be first must be the very last and the servant of all; and from those who have been given much, much will be expected." I pray that the leadership of this county will find its strength in you. May these citizen leaders find counsel, wisdom, and understanding in your grace and guidance. May the decisions that are made be balanced with good judgment, discernment, and dedication to the common good of all who call this county home. In the season of Thanksgiving, may we remember the words of Jesus who said, "He came not to be served but to serve, and to offer His life as a ransom for many." Tonight and always, may those who meet in this room act and serve with the words of the ancient prophet Micah faithfully in mind. And what does the Lord require of us? To act justly, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with the Lord our God. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. Thank you, Dr. Kavanus. We appreciate you starting us off on such a good note, and appreciate you being with us. It is my pleasure also to introduce Brandon Lozano, who is at the front with us tonight, who is one of our youth commissioners. Welcome. We're glad to have you. Okay, first up on our agenda is Approval or Correction of the Minutes, which you all have a copy of those before you. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as presented, or are there any corrections?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to Approval of the Agenda, which you also have a copy of that before you. Do I hear a motion to approve the meeting agenda, including the changes on page 28?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to Recognitions and Presentations. We are pleased to have Londa Strong from Active Living in Parks for a presentation.
Thank you all for this opportunity. I'd like to call John and Rachel Parker up here, please. John and Rachel have, excuse me, have put some money for a shelter at Rob Wallace Park in their last will and testament. We wanted to recognize them for that. They've been great citizens ever since I've been here. John was on the Park and Recreation Commission when I started in 1981, and he has spent four terms, I believe, he can correct me, four terms, four three-year terms, over the course of however many years that's been, at least 20, I won't count. And they have been great supporters of not just the Park and Recreation Department, the Active Living in Parks Department, and the Senior Center, but the county as a whole. They've done a lot for a lot of things that a lot of people will never know. The Parker Shelter at Frankless Park was put there by them in honor of, in memory of their son back quite a few years ago. I don't remember now, but I wanted to have them to come tonight. We just have a small token of appreciation for them. We have a nice plaque coming. Wasn't here for tonight, but wanted to have them to come tonight and recognize, recognize them for their contributions.
We both love Cabarrus County.
We were raised here. Go ahead, you can get a second.
We both love Cabarrus County, and we think you all are doing a great job. We're so pleased to have you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I had the distinct pleasure to serve with Mr. Parker on that Parks and Rec Board for a term, and he truly does have a heart for that department and for his fellow citizens of this county, and it was an absolute pleasure to serve with him.
Thank you for those comments, and thank you to the Parkers. It is my pleasure to frequently talk with Mr. Parker around town. Just at breakfast the other day, and he really stays abreast of what's going on in Cabarrus County and pays attention to what we do here, and we very much appreciate those complimentary words and certainly the contribution to the park. I think that more and more citizens of Cabarrus County every day are discovering the new Wallace Park, as well as enjoying what you've contributed at Frankless Park, and it is a tremendous asset to our county. So we appreciate that and all the many contributions that both of you have made to our community over many, many years. We thank you. The only thing I will add to that is, since it's in your last will and testament, I don't want that to come real fast. We hope that's a long time off in the future, but thank you very much. Okay, next, we have a recognition from Communications and Outreach, and I think David Baxter and Jonathan Marshall.
Sorry, I'm just going to do a quick introduction. This should seem fairly commonplace to you at this point with our communications and outreach in Channel 22. Once again, David has come back from a national conference with the, I'm going to read this, National Association of Telecommunications Officers and Advisors, otherwise known as NATOA, with two awards in hand, and he is going to come forward and recognize the individuals, and in one case, I think the individuals you will find are yourselves. So David, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thank you very much. And I kind of hinted to this the last time we were up here, that there might be some national, you know, awards in the works, and we were, we've been very, very fortunate to have won over the past two years, six national awards for different productions. And for the second year running, Out and About Commissioners Show has won an award of honor. And John Von Cannon, who's a freelancer, works with us quite a bit, he's got the, this award, and he shot and edited this particular one. And Mr. Schu was the person who did the interview with Luther Suthur.
And our second award, and this was the first one we've had, and I should do a backup a little bit, one of the things that make this particular association so special is there were nearly 1,000 entries. So the competition is from across all over the country. And this award that Jared Glass produced, edited, and shot with the help of, and I want to call up Mr. Clarence Horton. Clarence, if you'll come on up here? Because without Clarence, there would be no historical moments. He is, he knows more, he's forgotten more history than I even know, so it has been a real pleasure working with him over the years. This is actually our second national award for historical moments. So this one, we got the Award of Excellence, which is the best documentary in the nation. So it's quite, quite an honor. And Clarence, if you'd come up and say a couple of awards?
Thank you. We didn't expect to be back before you so soon, but I'm delighted. Many years ago, when Janet Dermond and David first talked with me about doing a few scripts for a new history program, or history program on the new governmental channel, he was already talking about what his vision was for that, for that channel. At that time, as some of you may remember, local channels were much more than bulletin boards of events that were likely to happen, and so on with music playing in the background. David's notion was to spotlight local government, to shape local or present local news, local personalities, local businesses, for the benefit of the, of the viewers, and to help preserve our rather unique local history, both for schoolchildren and for students of history of the future. He also wanted to entertain and inform viewers by using a variety of local programming. And I wasn't sure how that would work out, but they've done a wonderful job with that, as you have. His vision kind of melded with the commission of that day, which always had the notion from the beginning of presenting a, an entertaining and informative program of local governmental news, other local happenings, to give the viewers a very transparent window into the workings of local government. And I was always proud to be associated with that, that notion, because that's what it should all be about. I know that this commission, from the things I've heard you say before, share many of those same goals of those early commissions. And I want to thank you once again for allowing me the privilege of working with these consummate professionals and learning from their experience, or at least attempting to learn something from their experience. Through them, you've led the way in the state and local governmental programming, as you can tell from the number of awards that these fellows bring each year back from their conferences, and as you can see from these awards and others, beginning to have an impact on the national program of governmental stations. My hope is that we're laying the foundation for what will be a good base to build on in the years to come, both for future commissions and for future storytellers. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here.
Thank you.
This is, thank you. It's an amazing team we have here, and it's, that is what has been the success of the communications department is because of the entire team. And it's just been an honor to be involved with this organization, and you guys have done an amazing, the support is unwavering. And I was talking earlier, one of the things that makes us really different in this nation is the support that you guys give to the communications departments, because if, you know, if people don't know what's going on, they don't understand the inner workings. And, and we get an opportunity on a daily basis of having people tell us how special Cabarrus County is, and we're in a kind of a unique situation that people will come up and tell us these things, but every department is top-notch across this nation. And it's just been, it's a real honor. And so to come up here, the honors, the words are wonderful, but, you know, the response you get from the people on the street, that's the important thing. And, you know, serving them has, has always been our goal, and that's, you know, I'm proud to be part of that, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. It is, you have certainly brought great honor and recognition to Cabarrus County, and we very much appreciate that. In addition to the things that David talked about, I mean, one of the, one of the primary goals of this board and this staff has been transparency, being as transparent as possible with the public about the things that we're doing. And, and our communications department has been a critical piece in accomplishing that goal, and I think people pay attention to that. One of the, some of the other things, as I just shared with Judge Horton before this meeting, one of the historical moments that he had done a number of years ago about Stonewall Jackson Training School and the history of the school and how the cottages came to be, I was, was very honored to be able, David worked with me and produced a number of thumb drives of that program, which I in turn took to Raleigh and distributed amongst lawmakers there. And I think that that's going to be an important part of some discussions that we hope to have about some preservation efforts of that property that, that we get questioned about quite frequently. So the, the work of the communications department extends beyond just what you see on Channel 22, and we certainly want to recognize that and thank you for that. You know, I'm not sure if this is something I'm supposed to announce or not, but, but David has announced his retirement to us, which we have very mixed emotions about that. The first, first emotion is, oh, no, we don't want you to do that, but then that's kind of selfish. We think, well, you know, if you've earned your retirement, and if that's what you have decided to do, we need to be supportive of that, but you have made tremendous contributions to Cabarrus County that I'm sure we'll talk about more later on, but, you know, congratulations on the awards. We're, we're, we're proud. I don't know if I remember correctly, I think the Out and About episode that won the other award was also Commissioner Schu featured on that one, so I, I'm not sure how good I feel about that. You need to spread it, spread it around a little bit, but, you know, we're, we're very proud, and, and as, as I've said to you personally earlier, just, just this week, somebody commented to me about the Out and About session and something they had seen there, so it truly is educational, and we, we appreciate what you do, and we're glad that people all across the nation recognize what, what we see every day. So thank you very much, and congratulations.
Before you move on, I feel like I got to throw a little bit of something in here. The one, the addition of Out and About that you was talking about was the one about the North Carolina DOT. Is that right, David? Yeah, and we've been talking about the highway project and all, and, and believe it or not, they pretty much stuck to the plan. Rowan County, I suppose, have been finished with that part by next month, 2019, and they're about there. But about this particular award here, it was a bright sunny day, and I remember, remember going out to the Prairie Suthur Farm, and Louis Suthur, the owner of that farm, him and I had lots of conversations about it, and this is a state historic site, and we rode, he had one of those John Deere Gators, and we rode that all over the fields, and it was such a beautiful day, hot, very hot, riding around dodging the cows and all that stuff, but it was really a wonderful occasion for me, and I enjoyed meeting Louis and talking with him about that. So Louis, I hope if you get to see this, that I want you to know, we appreciate you letting us come out and do this, and this award, you know, wouldn't have happened had you not been able to let us come out and do this about the Prairie Suthur Farm. And I want to thank you, David, and your entire staff for the time that you take to make sure the lighting is right, and in particular, this day here, when the lighting was really good already, we still had to have plenty of lights to lighten it up even more. But, you know, you guys knew what you were doing, and I appreciate it, and as the chairman said, you know, when we wanted to start doing these Out and Abouts a few years ago, it was all about transparency, because we want the people of Cabarrus County to know what's available to them and what's out there. And a lot of times, you know, they don't, and so, so if you want to find out pretty much about anything, go to the county website, and you'll see the Out and Abouts there, and you pick you out a subject and look at it, and maybe you'll learn something. So anyway, thanks again, guys, and congratulations for the award.
Thank you. Okay, we move now to a recognition from Risk Management, and Tom Nunn's going to present that.
That's a tough act to follow, right there. So Safety National Insurance Company wanted to recognize Cabarrus County for tenures of loyal business with this nice award here, and they also took the time to present $1,000 on the county's behalf to an organization called Kids' Chance of North Carolina. And Kids' Chance of North Carolina provides educational scholarships to children of North Carolina workers who have been catastrophically or fatally injured in work-related accidents. The children ages 16 to 25 can receive as much as $5,000 in an annual scholarship, and they currently have 11 children who are on scholarship in our surrounding area. So just want to make you guys aware.
Great, thank you very much. With that, we're, we're proud to have been able to be a part of a contribution to what sounds like a wonderful organization. Thank you. Okay, now, David Thrift from Tax Administration has a presentation.
Thank you for the opportunity to recognize one of our Tax Administration employees, Mr. Greg Belk. This year, the North Carolina Property Mappers Association presented Greg with two awards. He was presented with the 2019 Mapper of the Year Award, as well as the 2019 President's Pride Award. So both of these are certainly high honors, and for Greg, they are well-deserved. Greg has been with Cabarrus County for 26 years, so I'm very thankful for his dedication, his commitment to the county, to the Tax Administration or department, but particularly to the citizens that he, that he's served over those years. In addition to his service with the county, he's been very active in the Property Mappers Association at the state level, serving in numerous roles, most recently as president just a couple of years ago. And I think these awards that he was received this year are just an example of the, the kind of representative that he is for Cabarrus County across the state, and just thankful for, for him, and want to congratulate him for these awards.
Thank you, David. Appreciate that. I just want to thank you folks also for, you know, this opportunity to say thank you for, this opportunity for being recognized, but I also want to thank David Thrift and prior administrators for their support, and also from county management team with Mike and Jonathan and Pam Dubois, and also from Rodney here, and from the county commissioners. These years have allowed me to participate in this Property Mappers Association across the state and to be more involved with it, and it's a great generosity that you folks have afforded to me to be able to do that. You know, doing all this has enabled me to better serve the citizens, and that's what this whole, to me, is what this position's about, is serving the folks of this county. So, you know, we, in my department, we really go out to make that our, our goal here today is to interact well with the citizens of Cabarrus County. And it is my privilege to be a part of managing the greatest asset that the state of North Carolina has and Cabarrus County, and that's going to be its real estate. And this past October, Elaine Marshall, the Secretary of State, came to our conference meeting and shared that with us, and she said, "Be honored that you have a part in this of making North Carolina one of the greatest countries, or one of the greatest states in the country, but also I'm proud to be part of Cabarrus County. We're one of the top counties in the state of North Carolina." And as I go to these conferences, I hear people talk about the things they don't get to do, but I get to enjoy what you folks share with me, and I really appreciate that. So thank you for this time.
Thank you, and congratulations, Greg. It's wonderful for us to have an opportunity to, for our citizens to hear how high the standing of Cabarrus County is amongst all the other counties around the state, and that's because of folks like you. And I'll also note that I've had the opportunity to work with two of Greg's sons, so he does an excellent job at home as well. They're outstanding young men. So thank you so much for what you do for us, for our entire community all the time. Okay, next, we have Informal Public Comments. I do not have any of the yellow cards that have been turned in tonight, so we will move to our Consent Agenda. Items listed under Consent are generally of a routine nature. These are items that we have discussed at length at our work session two weeks ago. Sometimes we don't, we, we have no new business tonight, and sometimes people say, well, everything was on the consent agenda, and so I take, like to take an opportunity from time to time to explain that those items on our consent agenda are discussed at our work session, which is also a public meeting and is also televised every month, which gives the public an opportunity, if they have some, some input that they would like to bring on any of those topics or questions, that gives them two weeks to have an opportunity to inquire about it, and also to be here to speak during our public comments as well. So those are all very important items as well. So at this time, do I hear a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented?
It's amended.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no, and that motion passes. As I mentioned, we have no new business tonight, so we will move into our reports, and first, we will open the floor to receive updates from commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities or on various boards or committees.
Okay, I'll do it.
Okay.
So I do have my regular report from the Senior Center Advisory Council, and I think you've heard before that we've had the pickleball tournament here for the state, and we've done such a great job that they will be coming back, and negotiations are underway to secure the dates for 2021 and 2022. This year in 2019, this tournament brought in 359 room nights, and so it's a great economic driver for our hotels and restaurants and things, so look forward to having them back. The Senior Christmas Party is scheduled for the Arena and Events Center on Tuesday, December 10th, at 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m., and the Holiday Hootenanny will be held on Saturday, December 14th, from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Concord Senior Center. It will feature two bands and dinner, and the Senior Center Travel Club will be going to Myrtle Beach, December 11th through 13th, if anybody has an interest in that.
Great, thank you. Okay, anything else? Okay, then we move to General Comments by Board Members.
I'm still trying to figure out why the Out and About episode that I was in 110-degree heat and pouring with sweat didn't win an award while sitting in the back of an ambulance, I might add. So I guess Lynn's just got the, the talent for our show, but no, what a, David's going to be sorely missed, and I know that will come back to us, but on the night of getting those awards, the communications department does a tremendous job, and I get home sometimes from a meeting, and will look back through the Twitter account of the county and remember something that we've talked about that I kind of went right over my head during a meeting, and so it's, it's extraordinarily helpful to the citizenship as a whole of what that entire department does, and the Out and About that we get to participate is a lot of fun. They've got all the work. Lynn must have all the talent, but I'm glad that we get to be involved with doing that, and I hope that certainly our board will continue to support that department. and I hope that certainly our board will continue to support that department and that future boards will as well.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just got a couple of reminders, mostly, I want to remind everybody, and of course, all you guys already know it, the lighting of the Christmas tree downtown Concord this coming Friday night here at, beside the Whataburger up there, you'll see that there'll be crowds there, so be sure to come to that, and then, of course, the, the Concord, I think it's the 91st Concord Christmas Parade is this Saturday, and so bring the kiddos, and y'all come to that, and with that, I want to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving. Be thankful for what you got, be thankful for your families, it's the time of Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Okay, I wanted to mention a very significant event that happened this morning, which was the 25th anniversary and the official renaming of Concord Paget Regional Airport. That is a project that has had significant value to Cabarrus County from an economic development standpoint and in many other ways, and it was a wonderful way to honor former Mayor Scott Paget, who I am proud to consider a close personal friend that has done an awful lot for our community, also to highlight the significance of the airport and what's gone on out there over the past 25 years. I think as a part of that ceremony, they also took that opportunity to recognize former Commissioners Jim Lentz, Giles Moss, and Martha Melvin, who's no longer with us, and former county manager Mike Ruffin, all of who were instrumental in, in placing that airport project in the hands of the city of Concord, which has proven to be a tremendous asset for the entire county. I was looking up just a couple, a couple of facts about, about the airport. It is listed as one of 10 commercial service airports in North Carolina. Last year, Allegiant Air served nearly a quarter of a million passengers out of Concord Paget Regional Airport. Was interested to see that North Carolina's public airports contribute $52 billion to North Carolina's state economy. There are about 4,500 jobs that they can associate with the airport directly and indirectly. I think one of the comments in this story says in 2013, a major turning port, turning point for the airport was when Allegiant Air began its commercial passenger service there, and at that time, Scott Paget was the mayor of Concord, and he greeted the first passengers when they, when they came off. They have had runway expansions from 5,500 feet to 7,400 feet in just 25 years, and that Concord Paget has become one of the busiest airports in North Carolina. It was kind of surprising to see when they looked at commercial aircraft, which is a very important part of the assets that are based at the airport, certainly from a tax revenue standpoint. Concord Regional is number nine in the state with 14 corporate aircraft, which I was surprised when you compare that to Charlotte Douglas, which of course is tremendously larger, they only have 21 corporate aircraft that, that are there. So, that is a tremendous asset to Cabarrus County, and, and the renaming of that airport also recognizes an individual that has been a tremendous asset to all of Cabarrus County as well. So, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank former Mayor Paget and congratulate him on that honor. I'm sure that we'll realize many benefits from that in all the years to come. Are there any other general comments anyone would like to make? If not, we do have need of a closed session tonight, so I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation, economic development, and personnel as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143-318, 11A, 3, 4, and 6. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no, and we are now in closed session. As Commissioner Schu said earlier, happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and we look forward to seeing you in December.